All right, so let's talk about Shaquilla Ingram. City Council District two, now you're in there.
Yes.
You you get in, Dan's leaving. Another person wants to run. Both of you are business owners. The other person is a little older, the newspaper decides. We got nothing. She's a good person. College educated. She's young, she's running. The other person's a good person, there's there's no bad background. Well, I know we'll say, let's just say it's a battle between the two different ages. Do you think that's us, that's even considered news?
Absolutely not, absolutely not, but that was the only thing that they could do to pit it, put it pit us against each other. Other than that, what were we gonna say, two black women running against each other, like, that was the only thing that could really, really stir some, some, you know, and for the record, I wasn't the first, you know, person in their twenties running for for this seat.
Right. Well, in in the history of the city council, you probably weren't it as well.
Absolutely.
When this country was founded. And when these city councils were founded all over America, I mean, so you, when I saw that, I said, wait, why is this news? That someone older is running against someone newer, like, I don't know. But nevertheless, um, so you come in the game with your own uh, marketing business. You went to school, I think you went to uh, went to two different colleges. I did my research, Fayetteville State University. That's where you got the marketing. I mean, uh, yeah, marketing.
No, that's not, Fayetteville State is not where I learned marketing. Um, that has kind of been a natural trait of mine, um, so.
No, no. What did you go there for?
Oh, I did my general education at Fayetteville State University, and then I transferred.
Savannah.
Yes.
Savannah College of uh, of Arts and Design.
Correct.
So, so basically, did you design your own flyers and pamphlets and did you market them yourself?
Absolutely, so I did have um, very close girlfriend of mine who has a design business, she did certain things. And then from there, I was able to um, build off of that. Um, so that I wouldn't necessarily tie myself up with having to do full things, but for the most part, absolutely, I I did a lot of it.
Wow.
And I do a lot of what people, I pretty much do all of what people see today, yeah.
So, so, so knowing that, you know, you got your your degree over there with Savannah's uh, Art and Design School.
So I didn't get my degree, um, I did, I did not get, did not finish. So, yeah, I like to, I like to, you know, keep it transparent, I did not finish. But it is, it is, it is a goal of mine to finish.
Now, well, was was it important, I mean, what was it good to learn? The uh, the idea behind uh, what some of us in marketing call advertising colors or marketing colors. Did you get into that? Did you get to learn that and the importance of certain colors and what they do?
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah.
And the funny thing is, I didn't go to, I didn't go to SCAF for marketing or advertising at all. I went to SCAF for uh, to major in interior design and minor in architecture. So it, so marketing just is just a natural trait, that natural skill set that I have. And with, you know, being in certain design classes, I was just able to enhance it.
And and your favorite color when it comes to doing marketing?
Um, blues. Family blue.
Is your favorite color blue because of the fact that so many Americans are actually colorblind to some greens and reds?
No, no, it's, no, not necessarily, but it's, it's, I just love blue. It's a common.
Hear about that?
I like to remain calm.
You ever hear about that?
I have heard it before, yes.
So Mark Zuckerberg is colorblind to certain reds and greens, that's why he came up with that Facebook blue.
Mm hmm.
Didn't know, didn't know that, huh?
That, I did not know that.
A lot of the companies use the blue.
Wow.
So that the people going on these apps won't be really, you know, hit by that red, like, you know, that that awful red that uh, Wells Fargo uses. You know what I mean? Uh, ladies and gentlemen, once again, it's the um, it's yours truly, MC Spice, the show is called Politicking with MC Spice. It's a whole hour of power, we speak about whatever they want to speak about. And it's more about people over politics. That's what the show is about, so. I I only wanted to put the newspaper out there for what they did. And how they did it. So that people can make an informed decision when they uh, vote. And and with, you know, as they follow you or whomever. It's better to make an informed decision as opposed to being uh, pit one way or the other, because as far as I'm concerned, them putting age in it, it's basically them saying, well, younger people probably don't know how to vote. Or, hey, these younger people got something for y'all older people. No matter what, the constituency does not show an age, the constituency actually have people who can't even vote. Three year olds, two year olds, so, you know, that's what the newspaper should have been looking out for when they, when they spoke about this. So I wanted to put them on blast for that. So, you know, hopefully they're they're watching this, I wanted to put them on blast for that. Um, I congratulate you, are you going to run again?
Absolutely, absolutely.
That's coming up soon.
Well, well. It's it, it's being determined, so as you know, the twenty twenty census happened. And as you know, um, there were some delays, so um, it is being said that the census information won't be back until September. Which calls for possibility to actually delay the election.
Which, which, which call for a possibility of um,
A delay in the election? Mm hmm.
How about an online election, will that cause for that as well?
Listen, if anything, they should have, they should have, uh, they should have put resources into that.
Yeah, so, um. All right, so they're trying to delay it, what would a delay be? Would it be a catastrophic delay, six to seven months or ninety days?
I think, I think maybe first half of twenty twenty two.
What?
One, well, this is twenty twenty one, correct, yeah, so first half of twenty twenty two potentially is why I'm thinking there there will be elections.
Wait, wait. First half of twenty twenty two?
Yes.
June or July? But yet.
Earlier than, earlier than that, probably. Earlier than that, because I'm, I can, I can predict that they will probably, and I, you know, I don't know any of this to be concrete, you know? But what I can, I can see is they're gonna do, try to do a hard push to get the information reviewed to see if, and it's all dependent upon what the census data look like, looks like. If we don't have to redraw lines, then then it's easier to go ahead and plan for the uh, elections. But if we do have to redraw lines, that could take a little bit more time, so on so forth.
Sorry, I'm just finishing up my Coca-Cola. Okay. Uh. Oh, man, this, they're making this thing is uh, most impossible. I spoke to a city councilwoman yesterday, actually. And uh, what, one of her biggest fights in the city council is um, affordable housing. Is that what something, is that one of what your platforms or your issues is um, with respect to the city council and the city hall itself? Um, what are some of the issues that Shaquilla Ingram wants to fight for, focus on and get done while, while she's in office, not only this term, but the next term, and you got a longer term now anyway.
Right, so for me, yes, I, if, a lot of people know, I am big on addressing um, things like affordable housing, but for me, in a broader term, I am extremely interested in um, equitable, um, equitable dis- dis- distribution of resources. Um, so a lot of, and attention to our communities, our intimate neighborhoods and communities. A lot of um, what we see, a lot of development that we see happening within the city um, is leaving our communities behind. And um, I that was the soul of why I decided to run, I was looking at the neighborhood, my grandmother raised, raised her boys and, you know, myself in and other neighborhoods that I've lived in, and um, you know, in a sense of being able to build a baseball stadium for millions of dollars with taxpayers' dollars. And then you look at your neighborhoods, specifically your mo- most marginalized communities, and they are not getting equitable distribution of city services and dollars. And so that, that um, that is what I, I fight for.
Um, are you visible with your constituents, are you actually visible in the community? Uh, more than just placing a sign in the front yard and more than just placing a placard in the window? Uh, what is your level of 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 visibility and how do you go about um, being visible in your community?
You know, what I learned is, it's it's kind of in the eye of the beholder. Where I feel as I'm in, I'm visible in the community. Some may feel like I'm not doing enough, or I'm not visible enough. And so um, for, I like to say that, you know, I try to be visible. And if I'm not visible, then I try to be accessible. Um, you know, and COVID did put a, throw a huge monkey wrench in things, and so there was a lot of adjusting that had to be done, but for the most part, I I tried my best to be visible and accessible.
Okay, so um, pre-COVID. No one actually knew about it until January, February, twenty twenty.
Mm hmm.
Um. You're running. In two thousand nineteen, you were elected November fourth, two thousand nineteen. Prior to November fourth, you hit the ground running for election. Hmm. May, June, two thousand nineteen or or earlier?
A little bit later, June, July, most of July.
Because you know this is a trick question, because I'm about to catch you in some.
Mm hmm.
Oh, I'm gonna catch you. You can sit right there all you want, I'm gonna catch you. So here's the, here's the deal. Since you were running around June, July, two thousand nineteen. And since there was no COVID. And since you say and claim that you went to go see the people and you made yourself visible. Then why does this paper say that you were not at any backyard cookouts?
When? If it was darn cold, then of course I was not gonna be at backyard cookouts.
No, I said June or July, two thousand nineteen.
Oh, gotcha, so here's the thing. I was very strategic with how I moved. I um, I didn't really go to backyard cookouts like that unless it was my family's, and here's the tricky thing about that. And here, I, and I guess I could say more so, not tricky, but the blessed thing. If I go to a cookout, a family cookout, it's in the district.
Oh.
Because my family is in the district. So, yeah, so, so, you know, I just kind of bled it all in, and you know, my family knew what was going on, their friends know. So um, for, but for me, my campaigning did look a little bit different, it was a bit more intimate. So I personally knocked doors, I personally made calls. And um, I personally left my palm cards. So where I knew I didn't have the time to go to all these events. I had to touch people. I had to let people know who Shaquilla was, and Shaquilla had their best interests at heart. And so, you you know, you maybe you can do that at cookouts, but that's not how I work.
Oh.
But I do love a cook, I do, I love a good cookout.
Oh, yeah?
Yes, burnt hot dog, baked baked beans, baked macaroni and cheese, that's my go-to.
However, let me ask this question, we want to see if you're a real city councilwoman.
Okay.
When you go to the cookout, does somebody in your family ask for you who made the potato salad?
Actually, we don't have to ask who makes the potato salad. We already know who makes the potato salad. Yeah. I tell you, don't change, we already know who made what.
Oh, okay, so it's one person, okay, they make sure.
All you gotta do is say, all you gotta do is say, we having the cookout this time in this day. And everybody knows what they need to bring, don't nobody gotta ask anybody. We know what we need to bring. My uncle go make sure the meat's done, my other uncle go get the fried ribs. The ladies don't, one, one auntie gonna do the lasagna. Aunt Helen go come with the uh, potato salad, but she's getting older now, so her daughter, you know, she, she's, the daughter makes potato salad, but she make it just like her. So, you know, we, 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 we are, we know what we working with.
Wait, so wait, wait, so Aunt Helen is a real person?
Oh, my Aunt Helen is a real person, she live right off.
Oh, I thought you were just saying Aunt Helen, like, you know how people make up, oh.
No, Aunt Helen is real, honey, she real, real, she drive a a big body Cadillac DeVille, she real, real.
Oh, yeah, she's real. Uh, she's a big body Cadillac, oh, you can't mess with people like that.
No, no.
You know, you gotta watch out for that glove compartment.
Listen, when she fix her wig, don't mess with my Aunt Helen.
Well, she gonna watch this and say, what you trying to do, put me out there like that, now? All I gotta tell you is, I know she's, she's probably getting older.
Yes.
But when me and my wife, my family comes, please tell her, look, I got friends that make Vegas. That's all. Because we gonna come through one day. We want that potato salad, you just made it famous, everybody. Shaquilla Ingram, her Aunt Helen makes banging potato salad. Follow her, follow, follow Shaquilla on Facebook and find out when that, when that cookout. You, your future endeavors. Now, you're doing the city council district two, you're running again. You're very young, so you're not even thirty yet.
Not yet, yet, next month.
You're not even thirty yet.
No, next month.
What is going on?
Yeah.
Do you know that there's a crop of young individuals nationwide doing this? What do you think spurred these young people who we all said were not worried about politics? What spurred them to not only get into politics, but get into one form of politics that they kind of shunned, which was, which is local politics? What is it that you think got these younger people all over the nation so involved in local politics?
I personally think, you know, our generation is a bit wired differently. Um, we grew up being able to express ourselves to a certain extent. We grew up kind of um, diverse. So when we look up and we see certain things happening in the world, we don't understand how is this even possible? We don't, we don't, we, and I get we understand, but we don't, we can't fathom or want to deal with why, why is the poverty rate this, the way it is? Why, why are very elected officials that are eighty years old that can't even relate to me in this society?
Wow.
So I feel, you know, I, I, and you know, people have been telling me this a lot lately, where it's us that have the energy to do this type of work. And it, and a lot of people believe it should be, you know, younger generations doing the work. And history, history tells us this is true as well. Look at the civil rights movement, look at how young Dr. King was, look at how young John Lewis was.
Right, right. And you know, I think, you you're touching on something important, because uh, when it comes to politics, it's not just about walking to the ballot box and putting that, that vote in, or that vote card or whatever it is. I think when it comes to politics, some, someone told me a few years ago that politics also involves people of a certain age category who have income that's coming in from regular jobs. And then their friends have income from regular jobs, so they can support a movement, like, let's do a bus ride to DC, or let's do a plane ride. Whereas, once people have aged out, become a certain age, and they're on a quote unquote fixed income, they can't do those things. They don't have the money to do those things. They can't put up their houses to get a ten thousand dollar loan to go do certain things. So I think you're right, and I I'm glad that, you know, in our lifetime, it came back around, because you know, man, I've spoken to a rapper a couple of years, a couple of years ago, and he said, you know what, just throw the whole, he said, just throw the whole, what do you call it? Just throw this whole generation away. I said, throw it away? Man, they don't care, just throw them all away, throw the whole generation away, just wait another generation. I said, we ain't gonna be here, we gotta wait. And, but again, I, I don't think that a lot of people are seeing what's really happening. So with this Politicking with MC Spice, this thing here, it's really, it's called Politicking with MC Spice. You know what it's about? Here I am in East Bubble. I could be in California, or I could be without, but the truth is from an area in Boston, where a lot of our people are however, I think on a twenty-four hour basis, they able to go online, these videos, see the person, see what it is that made you want to do what you want to do. I think that if we can do this on a twenty-four hour basis, as opposed to a special on PBS that talks about if we did that, we could be a part of our culture. We already have a culture, we got our back to the culture, we got a hip hop culture, we got technology, you know, HBCUs that we're interested in. But for some reason, politics is not a part of our culture. Like you said, it was a civil rights movement. We're looking to uh, get things that weren't just given to us. And you grow up and you see things and go, wait a minute. I went to school with this person, that person, and this person, that person, I know they supporting this person. So you got white friends, Asian friends, who are not supporting this person who's speaking against these type of people. And then so you start speaking up, your Asian friends go, hey, you running, I got your back. Your white friends, hey, you running, I got your back. So that's a totally different movement. And I, and I appreciate that, I'm glad you're doing that, because that's all for me. You know, I just, I'll be, I'll be fifty-five in September, so I'm, I'm, I'm old. But truthfully, so I, I'm, I'm completely willing to make that move. And I'm, I'm so glad that you had the courage to want to put things forward. I just wish I was there, you said earlier that your family has a barber shop that's been in the community for a long time, how how long has it been there?
So, since before I was born, it was no longer um, open due to their, their passing, and it stayed open a few years after uh, my grandfather passed. Um, but I, we, we keep in touch with uh, the barbers that used to work there. Um, I know uh, the, the long, the the longest member of the barber shop, he lives in my district. And was still, and works in a barber shop of my district. And so um, and so uh, it, it's, uh, I miss it, you know, but I do, I do enjoy, um, I do enjoy the memories, I do. And, and the learning lessons.
What's the name of the barber shop?
It was Ramsey Street Barber Shop.
Ranch Street?
Ramsey Street Barber Shop.
Oh, Ramsey Street?
Mm hmm.
Oh, I can just imagine. I, I can, so, the magazines, the magazines alone are history in a barber shop. Because you can see some stuff that you've never bought yourself and say, oh, I need to buy this. I already know Jet magazine was in there, so was Ebony.
Oh, my gosh, Jet, Ebony, um, those are the major ones, and then your travel magazine, but Jet and Ebony always there in the Post-Web press.
Well, they, you know, little history about me. I was supposed to be in, they was gonna have Jet, you know, there's a Jet Beauty of the Week. And he, you know, they have a lady, the next page was gonna be the Jet Gentleman of the Week. And I had fought to get that done. So I go, I moved there, go, I mean, went to go see them, we sat down, you had dinner and everything, the guy was like, okay, so who's the guy you're talking about? And I was like, me. I stood up and I ripped my shirt off. And they laughed at my stomach like, man, are you out of your, I got you. Oh, it was a joke, but a little jokey joke. No, but um, so you're in there as a young girl. Are you there after school or?
Uh, uh, and yeah, okay, uh, in the barber shops.
Yeah, is this after school?
Yeah, a baby, I had a playpen in the back corner, sucking out a bottle, yeah.
And then, so you start growing up in there, they got the coldest sodas in a barber shop, I didn't, you know.
Absolutely.
Because nobody buys a soda at night. So the thing's getting cold, by the time you come in there in the morning, that soda is cold. Now, so if you grew up in a barber shop, you're hearing this talk, you go in there one day. Um. What did they know to you to be, what did everybody knew you were gonna grow up to be?
You know, it was crazy, so my nickname was Real Blood.
Real Blood?
Real Blood, mm hmm.
No, Real Blood?
Yeah, Real Blood. Yeah, Real Blood, that was my nickname.
You, you know that wouldn't be a nice nickname in Compton, right?
No, it wasn't.
Or St. Louis.
So, every time I walked into the barber shop coming from school, my grandmother would stand behind the barber shop, behind her proper chair, whether she has somebody in the chair or not. She will always point out and say, they're gonna honor roll student, they're gonna this, she did did this, she did that, and so she was always pointing that out. And whether, whether um, people, you know, acknowledge I was gonna be something or do great things in the city or wherever, my grandmother made me feel like I, 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 I could do whatever I wanted. Because, you know, she saw the little things that I was doing, and she always pointed out to, who, who to me were strangers. You know what I mean? I mean, I'd have never seen them a day in my life again, you know? And so for me, for her to always say, well, this one is, she doing this at school, she did this, and it, it was meaningful.
So, are the conversations at a barber shop more progressive leaning about the community itself and family? I, I hate to say this, because here's the debate. Or, as opposed to a dun, 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 hair salon?
Well. I would say, yeah, they are more progressive, because in a hair salon, what you'll get is, um, girl, this, and girl, I was at the grocery store, and girl, and I got to take the key, you get that at the, at the, um, at the salon. What you get in the barber shop is, um, the governor did this, or mayor did that, and the police officer did this. And, and you saw what they did in the black community, and not, so that's what you get. And then you'll get some, you know, for the women that bring in, well, I don't know what to do about him, and, you know, he keep going out, and you know, I can't, so you get, you get some of that in the barber shop. And the, the hair salon is more intimate for women to just huh, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
But barber shop is for people to say, how we gonna do this?
So, so the poor black man, even when he just cutting hair, he's still trying to figure a way out. Ain't that something?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, listen, oh, my God, my, my grandma had, my grandma and my granddaddy went, my granddaddy and my grandmother went night and day. My grandmother had homeless people working in there, sweeping the floors, wiping down stuff. My grandmother had homeless people working in there, sweeping the floors, wiping down stuff.
Barber shop?
Yeah, oh, yeah, my grandparents, they ran it together. My grandmother was a barber.
Grandmother was a barber?
Oh, yes, and she was, she was, she was top. She was had honcho in there. And so my but here's the, here's the thing. Monday, Tuesday through Fri- through Friday, my grandmother ran the barber shop by herself and of course with the other two. One to two employees that were there. My grandfather was the general manager for the barber shop on Fort Brad Base. So he would be on Fort Brad Base from Tuesday, Monday to. Uh, Friday. Or Thursday, so he'll come in sometimes on Fridays and be at the barber shop. So my grandmother pretty much ran it through the week by herself. And then my grandfather would be there on the weekend days, Friday and Saturday. So my grandmother was a barber. She she would teach, you know, whoever wanted to learn. Um, and I mean, she 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 ran a type type ship. And but she, people had a lot of respect for her because she didn't, she wasn't the type of person to take anything from anybody. Um, she she had a heart of gold, she would cuss you out, but she had a heart of gold. And my grandfather was more like a gentle giant. Where he wasn't necessarily gonna cuss you out, but he always had his pistol on him. That's just the truth. Um, and my grandmother, she was the same thing. She was the same way, but she would cuss you out and still make sure. You you she she made you aware that her pistol was on her. So, you know, I grew, and that's how, that's that's the 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 foundation I grew up on, you know? And then uh my mom and my dad were working. My mother was a beautician as well. And so um, God, I know, like, my grandmother has shielded um. Gang members from going to jail, trying to protect them cuz they, she know. Knew that they were just young and needed to pull themselves together. Um, she's taken many people in. Um, and my grandma, my grandfather wouldn't say much about it, though he didn't agree. He, I think he understood.
Yeah, wow. That's that's a beautiful story. So i- in the building's no longer there either, huh?
No, the building still stands.
Is anybody in that building?
No.
So. Have you ever thought of uh. Peeling off a few dollars and. In the spirit of your grandmother and grandfather, hiring somebody to sit there and have your own office right there in the district?
I thought about it. I thought about it plenty of times.
I'll I'll tell you something. I'll tell you why I said that. Uh, a gentleman named um Chuck Turner in Roxbury in Boston. He was on the city council for a long time. And um. That's what he did. He had made a promise that he'd have an office in the community that people can go to with questions and this and that. So they don't have to go all the way down to City Hall. They don't have to worry about parking. You know, in Boston, there's a lot of people who don't have cars and they don't wanna get on the bus. He did that until the day he died. He actually had that office. And he paid a lady, uh, young lady Angela Yard to run it. So when when people had issues, they would go to Chuck and write it down or whatever they had to do it. Sometimes he'd be in the office and they could meet him in person. He didn't think that it was fair that they come all the way down to see him. So he always had that open. So I always thought to myself, how much is he paying her to be there? But I never knew what the city council made. I'm like, well, I don't know how he's paying her. I know they only make ten, fifteen grand.
Yeah, not much.
Yeah, well, but regardless, he did it and he did it for a long time. So um, it it's just an idea, you know, uh, that that to have it open, even if. Even if someone retired and your family would like to just be there, to take information from the folk in the community. So they can drop stuff off, drop questionnaires off, what have you. And then once in a while, you're there and they know they can see you there on a certain day. And then on maybe um. On the Fourth of July, you can throw a cookout right there at.
Right.
The barber shop. You know what I'm saying? Just an idea. Easter Sunday, like the the Friday before Easter, Good Friday, give out those Good Friday haircuts to the young boys. So they can go to church with their mother on Sunday. And then all you have to do when you write your history is book and say, I was speaking to this old, old man. On radio one day and he gave me that idea. When they do your special on PBS. Because there's, there's more to you than City Hall. What other uh aspirations do you have politically?
So I do know that I do want to hold this seat for a few 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 more terms. Um, you know, I don't wanna be here twenty-eight years. That I, that's just my whole, that's just me being honest and transparent. But I'm still, I'm still looking at, you know, what I wanna do politically else. Um. Um, because I also still want to finish up my architecture degree. Um. And and move within that field. So, yeah, I I'm still, you know, thinking about it and I think by the time I feel. Like I've accomplished what I want to accomplish um based on the community. That I would have figured out by then, what other political means that I wanna, I wanna take.
All right, so. No matter what the um profession that you get into, I can already see that some of the talk is that. You're gonna buy some land and build your own house and you're gonna be the architect.
Absolutely.
Is that what it is? Is that that is that what you're gonna do with that architect's degree? Gonna build your own? Drop your own planet?
Yeah, and more, more, yeah.
Okay, and then start a development company and then help the low income by saying, look, you even gotta ask me. It it's right now, wh- what is the linkage there where you are? Is there any linkage with respects to development in your community? Um. Is there anything where the developers must pay a certain fee? So that they can offset the buildings that they're building and is there a certain amount? Of square space dedicated? You wait, you're saying they don't make apartment buildings there? And say, we're gonna give X percent to low income?
So. Not not necessarily. No, if anything, uh, we cater to the developers' needs and wants. For them to develop here. And one of the things that I've been asked by our providers, our low-income proprietors, is to look at. Things such as inclusionary zoning where um. It kinda makes where certain developers, well, not certain, but developers, you know, have to include. That type of, you know, a percentage of um affordable housing.
So right now, in your entire district, there's no such thing?
Um, we have some, we have, we have low-income housing through um Housing Authority. I habitat for humanity.
So so that, so there there's obviously room for a bunch of improvement, a big space for.
Yes.
And and right now, your constituents. Your and and the people in your community are calling for what what is one of the main things that the community is calling for? Aside from the housing crisis, which I know is a major thing in North Carolina regardless. Um, so what are some of the people in your community calling for help with?
Equitable jobs. Um. And they want clean neighborhoods. And they want infrastructure. They want a stable infrastructure system. A lot of our communities um experience major floodings just by, you know, a regular rainy day. And I'm and I, what I mean is, um, you know, they have flood uh water. Sitting in their garages and living room just by, you know, two days of rain.
And so now, knowing that flood insurance is one of the. Well, it's a good insurance to have, but knowing that a lot of people fail to get it. This puts pe- this put, this will put their lives at risk with molding. Um, you know, on- once water gets anywhere near anything, if it's not high enough. It can start causing an issue. So.
That's right.
So that says this is a, this is a health crisis to those who don't have that type of insurance. But at the same time, what does it say to the builder who knows that that land is built that way? But will still be, will still build a house that can be flooded. Some of those homes down there are not that old.
Yeah, that's they want their money. They need to make their money.
So they, so they make a nice little piece of land. So that means somebody, the engineering department is not doing something right. In some of these communities. So now, those who have the insurance, they can easily do a whole new garage all over again. And those who don't. Matt, tear that garage down and just park the car outside because it's a health hazard.
Right.
So obviously, you do need to be there for a while cuz there's some stuff you need to do and you need more time to do that.
Right.
Um. Whether or not, whether or not there is uh due to COVID. A uh, not COVID, but uh COVID and um the um the census. Do. Are you prepared to begin a campaign anyway? Uh. Around the June, July, like most campaigns begin? And and. So you've already told people from the jump, no matter who asks you, I'm running again. So it's never a question, right? So that uh.
Oh, yeah.
That the uh, the the Island Jackknife or whatever the name of that paper is. So so they don't mess it up this time. They need to know you're running again.
Right.
So do you contend that you'll probably have a lot of contenders against you?
Absolutely, absolutely, absolutely.
And um, but do they know that you're gonna win anyways?
They'll find out.
You're you're not scared, are you?
No, not.
Cuz you got the whole community with you.
Not not only do, you know, i- if if I don't have the whole community with me, you know. This council is not my legacy. It may be a part of my legacy. But I can't afford, I can't allow this to make or break who I am. And my as- my other aspirations and my destiny later for me. So when the rules, I'll be fine.
Absolutely. That's right. So Savannah, College of Art and Design. Did you ever go to the Yama Sea Shrimp Festival? You never heard of it?
Never heard of it.
Have you ever gone to Beaufort, South Carolina?
No.
Ever heard of it?
I have.
Have you ever gone to Hills and Head?
I have.
Okay, so you went to Hilton Head. You you went to Belks and bought a bunch of Dunian Burke?
No.
Do they still have Belks on the on the Hilton Head?
I don't know.
So it's supposed to be a pretty up, you know, upscale uh community. M- Muhammad Ali has a house out there or had a house out there. A lot of people, you know, a friend of mine who's a. Just retired as police commissioner. He he has a house out there. And um, they got a shrimp festival and I think, no, they got a clam festival. So Savannah. Let me see. V one oh three, is that the station you had to listen to out there?
Didn't do much listening to anything. I was busy with schoolwork.
Okay.
I attended the Savannah campus and the Atlanta campus. I attended the Atlanta campus first. And then by taking my my architecture courses, I had to transfer to the Savannah course. So I spent some time in Atlanta and then I went to Savannah.
Whi- which one, which one was more popping, Atlanta or Savannah?
Atlanta was more popping. Savannah was more my flow.
Oh, like, get it popping when you want to, go home, relax.
Uh, well, just the environment by river, you know, right in the in the heart of the downtown area. Um, places I've lived outside of Fayetteville, I always live in the downtown area. So when I lived in Atlanta. Before I moved back home, I lived downtown Decatur. Um, I just love it downtown.
Okay, um, did you like the pink? Uh. Pastel colored buildings down in town, um Savannah, you know, that old uh. New Orleans type of flavor?
Yeah, I do. I love the, um, I love the, just the. The architectural styles, um, the different colors and you have some really beautiful mint green buildings. Um, uh, stone.
It's like the painting behind you. Those were the colors. And um. And so what about like walk, just walking around and hearing those Clydesdale horses?
Oh, yeah, love that. Uh, most Saturdays I would go down to Market Street and they'd be right there. Um, Market Street, you get to pet them and whatnot.
Yep. Okay, uh, okay, so, yeah, Savannah, that, see, I was born in Beaufort, South Carolina, so.
Okay.
We used to go to Savannah to go shopping. To go to Savannah Mall. I'm like, this ain't even a real mall. It it ain't, you ain't missed nothing. You know what it is? In North Carolina, they will call it a service road. You get off and then there's all big old shopping center. They call that a mall. I said, no. Where I'm from, a mall, you go in and you park downstairs and then you go upstairs and everything's inside. But upstairs, like, you gotta get your umbrella to go from one store to the next. But yeah, but other than that, yeah, that's that's uh. I remember going out to Atlanta and, I mean Savannah, and kinda hanging out and I I liked the Clydesdale horses. That was a big deal to me. Now, they have those in Atlanta, but they're not as close proximity. You don't, you don't just walk by it and see it right there on that little s- small street. You know what I mean? It was a big deal to me. So um. And in Fayetteville, I've been there about three or four times. Um, had to do some radio out there. I used to drive from Boston to Fayetteville just to help a friend do a radio. I'll be like, hey, I'm in Boston, man. When we come through, drive down there, do a little quick radio show and then leave. And I I kinda like that area. Um. But I know that when I was there, I heard these radio commercials and I'm like, is every one of their nightclubs on Brad Boulevard? Back then, I guess it was, remember?
Yeah, it was.
And so going forward, what will be? Your, what are your issues? What 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 is your platform? For how, what you'll be running for coming soon? Is it still what you're on now or is there something you wanna add to it?
Um, most certainly a continuation, uh, given, given COVID. Um, there are some things that I have to z- really zone in on, like poverty, jobs. Um, getting our citizens back to work safely. Um. Making sure that um those that are currently living in poverty don't slip into homelessness. Um, and so. A big part of what I'll be doing this year is trying to build meaningful partnerships. To help with the the continuation of my platform.
Um, and as it relates to COVID. Is everybody in the city council already got their shot?
I don't know. I don't know. I can only speak for myself, you know, due to HIPAA, certain things, you know, unless they disclose it. But I did get um my my first vaccine shot. Um, of course, I'm not of, you know, in the age group to get it. Uh, but I volunteered at a vaccine clinic. To help get um some individuals of the minority, uh, black and brown communities vaccinated and so.
Or to help them. Or help tell them it's a good idea and 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 sell it to them?
Well, no, 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 more so like kinda be on site, you know, give them water. If they're waiting, you know, make sure they have their information filled out. So actually truly volunteering.
You didn't bring no potatoes out and try to make black people go take no shot, did you?
No, no, but it was in church and the church mothers made some pound cake.
Oh.
Yeah.
That's illegal. They smell that cake and they were like, I'm gonna sit right here and wait for my cake.
So so, yeah, so um at the end of the event, they did ask the volunteers if they wanted to get the vaccine. Um, and I think all of the volunteers said, yeah, and it's interesting because, you know, um, that like. Before we volunteered, um, people asked, well, can we get a vaccine? Well, you know, the person who asked was told no. And so I guess, you know, it changed once we kinda got there. But I, you know, I was prepared to not receive my vaccine, but when the opportunity came available, I say, you know, let me at least. Uh, do my due diligence, not to only to myself, but to my family and my community. And as, you know, I am a millennial, uh, we are the most um. Um. Uh, hot social. um, uh, hot, social uh, generations and, um, and I'm pretty, from what I'm being told, I'm the, I'm the most social council member. Uh, where we get a lot, get around a lot. And so um, and you know, I've heard people call us super spreaders of the, that, of the, of the pa- pandemic or the virus. And um, so um, I, I, I got the shot to just go ahead and start being able to say, listen, I'm not a fan of, you know, vaccines, or I, you know, they make me nervous, but, you know, I went ahead and I took this serious, and I went ahead and got it.
Oh, okay. Well, uh, like some of your uncles. Don't have anything to say.
Yeah, that's fine.
Alright, okay, she uh, yep, so um, yeah, butter pecan or uh, maple walnut ice cream? Uh-oh, country girl in the house.
Yeah. But let me tell you, the only difference in the taste is, the, so, I'm not gonna use the term bitter. Though the maple walnut is a bit more tuned down. It's a bit more smoother. Yeah. Yeah, it's maple, mhm. I'm, I'm ice cream girl. You talking about pecan and walnuts and maple?
Oh, that's your thing, okay. You're ice cream girl, okay. Rum raisin or uh, chocolate brownie? Chocolate, chocolate fuzz brownie, I'm talking about, okay, Haagen-Dazs or any other brand? Ben and Jerry's?
I like them both, but I like Haagen-Dazs better.
Okay. Um, when those Haagen-Dazs are on sale, three for nine ninety-nine, you buy them?
Three for nine ninety-nine, yeah, I'm buying.
Okay. I ask these questions to a lot of people, Coca-Cola or Pepsi?
Coca-Cola.
Why would people say Coca-Cola, you're like?
Let me tell you something, it'll take your breath away, you hear me? Yes, get stuck right up in here. Now, don't make me go to McDonald's after this interview. Get me a Coca-Cola.
Hey, well, Coca-Cola, look, hey, look, hey Coke, if you, if you're watching this Coca-Cola, she went to school in Georgia. Y'all are in Georgia, y'all might wanna endorse that next campaign, man?
Listen, oh, I love Coca-Cola. I've, man, I used to, my, some of my Christmas gifts, when I lived in Atlanta, would be, you know, monogrammed Coca-Cola bottles from my mom and my dad. So I'd go straight to Coca-Cola and be able to get them.
So, okay, so let me say, let me, hold on. Your, your grandparents owned a, a, a hair salon, I mean, a barber shop. Did they have those Coca-Cola bottles in there? Those nice cold Coca-Cola?
They had, they had both Pepsi and Coca-Cola. Here's the reason why. My grandmother left her some Peppies at Pepsi, and of course, it was, you know, here in North Carolina. But my grandfather had a client who worked for Coca-Cola. And man, if you go to this guy's house, he's still living, and he lives in my district. He has Coca-Cola everything. Coca-Cola Christmas tree, Coca-Cola ornaments, all these Coca-Cola things in his house. So, so um, they would get their Coca-Colas on discount, you know, from, one of my grandfather's um, clients. So he has a mixture, had Mountain Dew Pepsi, so they had a mixture for the clients, mhm.
So, so, so he got you. Way back then, he got you into loving Coca-Cola. That one, that one, yeah, he got you.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, well, ladies and gentlemen, Shaquilla Ingram, City Council District Two, we're gonna be talking to her again very soon, because she's running again, and she's winning again. Because nobody's gonna beat her designs graphically, and no one's gonna beat her marketing. Oh, and no one's gonna beat the fact that she is well-known in her zone.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you for the interview. I appreciate the time. Um, and again, you're open for us to, to discuss some more, right? Cause I wanna, I wanna make sure.
Absolutely. I like tough questions. I love it.
Okay, and we, and you love Coca-Cola, we know that.
Yes.
Alright, so you enjoy the rest of your, enjoy the rest of your evening, and um, and I hope to speak, I can't wait to see you again, speak to you again.
Likewise, thank you so much.